Could I have a motion, please, to close the agenda and private session?
Move.
Donna McAvoy is moving.
Second.
Just Celeetti is seconding it. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Like to call the February sixteenth, two thousand, February sixteen, two thousand sixteen, meaning to order adequate notice that this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January fifth, two thousand sixteen, by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Before we salute the flag, I'd like to welcome Mr. DeGeorge to our board. This is his first meeting, so I'd like to welcome him on behalf of the entire board. Could you please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we're one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and elections.
Page fifteen, please. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the special meeting held on January seventh, two thousand sixteen?
Move.
Mrs. McAvoy? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr.?
Bidwell.
Bidwell. Thank you, Noel. Sorry. Roll call?
Mr. Celeetti, yes. Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Abstain. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session held on January seventh, two thousand sixteen?
Move.
Mrs. McAvoy? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bidwell again. Roll call, please.
Mr. Celeetti, yes. Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
I abstain again. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the special meeting held on January twelfth, two thousand sixteen?
Second.
Mrs. McAvoy and Mr. Bidwell?
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the agenda meeting held on January seventh, two thousand sixteen?
Move.
Mrs. McAvoy? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr.?
Bidwell.
Bidwell. Thank you, Noel. Sorry. Roll call?
Mr. Celeetti, yes. Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Abstain. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session held on January seventh, two thousand sixteen?
Move.
Mrs. McAvoy? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bidwell again. Roll call, please.
Mr. Celeetti, yes. Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
I abstain again. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the special meeting held on January twelfth, two thousand sixteen?
Second.
Mrs. McAvoy and Mr. Bidwell?
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Mr. Mc, Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. I'm abstaining, I'm sorry. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session held on January?
Move.
Second. Who moved? Mr. Bidwell moved?
Yep.
Mrs. McAvoy, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Abstain. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the agenda meeting held on January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen? Is that you, Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Second.
Mr. Celeetti? Roll call?
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Could I have a mo, a motion to approve the minutes of the private session held on January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen?
Move. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Could I have a mo, a motion to approve the minutes of the private session held on January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen?
Move. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the special meeting held on January twenty first, first, two thousand sixteen?
Move. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Abstain. And move that the board approve the minutes of the private session held on January twenty first, two thousand sixteen?
Move.
Mrs. McAvoy, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Bidwell?
Sure.
Roll call?
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Abstain, please. Page thirty-one. Could I have a motion, please, to approve payment of bills totaling five million nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-two cents?
Move.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Second.
Mr. Celeetti? Roll call, please.
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes, on all, except nay on the following: item nine-five-three-one-five-two, nine-five-three-one-five-eight, nine-five-three-one-five-three, nine-five-three-zero-one-three, two-six-oh-five-two-seven, and the list is coming across.
Thank you. Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could I have a motion through the adoption of this resolution, we, the Lacey Township Board of Education, pursuant to NJAC six-a-colon-twenty-two-dash-two-point-eleven, C four, you can make a motion any time, certified? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Second.
I have a misprint.
Roll call, please.
There's a misprint on thirty-one.
Excuse me?
What is it, Virginia?
There's a misprint on thirty-one.
Where?
There's a name that has to be changed in the middle of the page. Right?
James G. Savage, Jr.
Oh, yes. Mr. Savage will have to put Mr. DeGeorge.
With amendment.
Okay. We have a motion with the amendment.
Mr. Celeetti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. D'Chenza?
Yes.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Stein, you have anything?
Not right now, but I will have some add-on motions to request from the board later.
Okay. Carly, from our student representation.
Unfortunately, Lindsay couldn't be here tonight due to her working, but I'm here. So, the freshman class is selling ten-dollar travel mugs, and contact Mrs. Sullivan if you would like one. The sophomores are selling thirty-dollar stadium blankets, and contact Ms. Tassin if you would like to purchase one. They are hel, holding Rent a Senior on April twenty-eighth, and they are holding a speedball tournament from May twenty-third to the twenty-fourth. The juniors have worked on Kiss a Senior Goodbye, which will be May tenth through twentieth, and contact Mrs. LaPreta if you would like to purchase one for your favorite senior. Junior cruise tickets will be eighty dollars, and they're sold from April twelfth through the fourteenth. The seniors are working on prom invitations and memory books. And then, on the executive board, we are having students submit their i, their homecoming twenty-sixteen ideas to Mrs. York by the end of February. The, we want to thank all the volunteers who helped out with eighth-grade orientation. Lacey's Got Talent is February twenty-fifth in the auditorium at six, for five dollars to get in. The Amazing Race will be March eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, and it's an event similar to the Battle of the Classes. And Finding Never, Neverland will be on March seventeenth. It's run, an event run through the Future Teachers of America. It's a Broadway play, dinner, and transportation. And contact Mrs. Danaslasi if you're interested. The first thing that comes to mind when we think of this month's unsung hero is Well-rounded. He is a junior in high school and participates in many activities in and out of school. He has been a Boy Scout for eleven years and is currently in the rigorous process of being, becoming an Eagle Scout. In the athletic department, he is on the track and cross-country train, team, and leads the team as he is captain for both. His excellent academics and volunteering has recently got him in, inducted into the National Honor Society. When he's not hard at work studying for his AP and honors classes or running, you can find him practicing the jump drums with his band. In between all those activities, he still finds time to give back to the community and volunteers at the Elks Club. This is why this month's unsung hero is William Rapsis. Do you plan this family's standing? Can we give them a round of applause?
Thank you, Carly. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Anthony.
Thank you, Ms. Downing. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Hanchu to come to the podium and share with some of the students that he'd like to recognize tonight.
All right, thank you, Dr. Anthony. We may invite you, along with President Downing and the board, to join us, the families out here. Thank you. Every month, I get to introduce to you our outstanding seniors of the month as our senior spotlight, and I see the crowd gets bigger and bigger, so must be getting out. My shows are entertaining, so I'd like to thank you for coming out. But truly, the, the pleasure of, of being a principal of a high school is working with the students and to recognize students such as Will is recognized. What I'd like to bring down right now, our senior spotlight, senior of the month for February twenty-sixteen, Haley Ma. Haley, why don't you come on down? And before we roll our video, if any of you have a family, please stand up so we give them a round of applause also. Hi, Mr. Ma.
Hello, I'm Mr. Hanchu, and welcome to Senior Spotlight, February, where we meet our outstanding seniors of the month. Joining me now is Haley Ma. Haley is a two-year member of the National Honor Society, and is involved in activities including the FBLA, Interact, and ADA. Haley, can you tell us more about the activities and why you're important, it's important to stay involved in school?
The majority of the activities I do involve volunteering and, like, showing children how to lead a good life. I think it's important to stay involved because needs, like, it gives you a good, like, self-worth, like, helping kids and just being, like, a leader in the community.
All right, you're also involved in the sports as an athlete, and you volunteer as a assistant coach of the Lacey travel team, the lacrosse team. Can you tell us about your athletic career here at Lacey and your involvement and interest in sports?
Well, I had, recently had tummy surgery, so my senior year, I wasn't really able to play. Enjoy the sports I do, but I do still stay involved. I still go out to every game, every practice, I do the book and everything. So, it's, um, it's rough for me this year, but I still enjoy it.
But we're still working on, what do you like to do outside of school?
Um, outside of school, I really like to help kids. I like to hang with my friends, obviously. Um, it's just, I like to live my life.
That's good. All right, this is the toughest question we always ask seniors, what are your future plans?
Um, I plan on, like, Stockton, kind of studying physical therapy.
That's a great program. I had two, of my kids, one from Stockton graduated, and I have a lot of friends that were in the program, the staff program. Congratulations, Haley, on your selection as senior of the month. We'll be right back with Ryan Newman.
On behalf of the entire Board of Education, we want to congratulate you, Haley, for senior of the month, February two thousand sixteen.
Our next senior of the month, Ryan Newman. Ryan, come on down. And if we may have Ryan's family, please, stand so we give them a round of applause.
Welcome back to Senior Spotlight, February. Now, joining us, the senior of the month, Ryan Newman. Ryan is also a two-year member of the National Honor Society, is involved with activities and community service organizations such as ADA, the municipal line. Can you tell us about some of the organizations you're involved with, what you do in those?
We grant drugs and alcohol, um, substance, and we push for people not, um, get involved in drugs and alcohols, since they can bother you later, later in your life, and I help out with providing.
So, you're also a varsity baseball player, and you're involved with volunteering a little league here in town. Can you tell us about your love and your involvement with baseball?
Yes, I've been around baseball for thirteen years. I played all through middle school and high school, and, uh, I've literally got helped out with the field meetings, helped out with tournaments, and about basically almost every weekend, in the summer and fall.
That's great. I'm sure you're a, a good role model for those students.
Yes.
What do you like to do outside of school?
I like the vision down in, um, I like, obviously, I play baseball, like, baseball, play baseball a lot during summer. Um, I like, you know, just every day, like, activities, kind of, kind of, maybe.
All right, what are your future plans?
Um, I hope to go for, um, you know, kind of, doing for, uh, physical therapy, to be a physical therapist, and later on, on practice, um, down the road after I get into that job.
Physical therapy, I mean, need to visit you. I'm getting a little old, my age here, and my bones cracking. Congratulations, Ryan, your selection of senior of the month. We'll be right back with vocational senior of the month, Juan Rosor.
Ryan, again, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, congratulations, you being senior of the month, you've been involved in physical therapy, yes. There's a lot of us that are.
Next up is Juan Rosor. Is Juan here? He's a full house. Okay, Juan is our vocational education student of the month, and he's in culinary arts. If we could roll his tape, he's the, the next student. We'll catch up with Juan next month, bringing him in.
Welcome back to Senior Spotlight, February, where we meet our outstanding seniors of the month. Joining me now is our vocational senior of the month for February, Juan Rosor. Juan, can you tell us about what you do with the program at vocational school?
What I do at the vocational school is, uh, culinary arts. It's a very great program, it's learning a basic skill.
Now, why did you choose the culinary arts program at vocational school?
I chose the program because for my future, I wanted to be a chef, and, uh, enjoy my time, I mean.
Well, I like food, so I'm going to come visit you sometime. What do you like to do outside of school?
I like to, uh, do spring track, winter track, and work with the cat today.
Oh, so you're working and you're doing track, that's like the option. What are your future plans?
My future plan is to become a chef and become the great owner of a restaurant.
Well, when you get your restaurant, give me a call, I'll come visit you. Congratulations, Juan, on your selection of senior of the month. Thank you for joining us at Senior Spotlight, February. We'll see you next month.
All right, thank you, Dr. Anthony, thank you, Board of Education, for sharing our students' spotlight. We'll see you in March.
Thank you, Mr. Hanchu. We have another principal with us tonight. Mr. Dougherty is here from Mill Pond School, and he has some special guests with him, students from Mill Pond who are involved in the four-H soil project. And, um, I'm going to let him talk with you about who's here and why we are recognizing these special folks today. Thanks, Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize a group of outstanding Mill Pond students and one of our dedicated staff members, Mrs. Merga, for their work throughout the summer as well as the school year at the Rutgers University New Jersey Science Soil Summit. So, students, as I call your name, please, join us up front here for some recognition. I'd like to invite Emma Burr. And Emily Whitehead. And Mrs. Merga, please, join us up here as well. Our students, as well as Mrs. Merga, worked with over a hundred students across the state of New Jersey at this excellent educational opportunity. While at the four-H Science Soil Summit, the student team from Mill Pond Elementary School joined together with faculty, staff, and educators from Rutgers University to discuss soil science research and gain exposure to career and research opportunities in soil science-related sciences. We'd like to recognize their research and ingenuity and for being such fantastic representatives of Mill Pond Elementary School at this statewide educational event. I'd also like to contend, um, recognize Mrs. Merga for her work throughout the summer, attending several professional development opportunities on her own time to give our students such a fantastic learning opportunity. Absolutely. Yes.
First, I want to say thank you to the board and the district for honoring these students and working so hard. Many have been with me for the full two years that they've been at Mill Pond, and their dedicated and unending service to the garden program has benefited not only Mill Pond School, but it's also benefited the Lacey Food Bank, because that is who we prove to serve in the summer. I want to say there's a favorite saying that I have, Thomas Paine, who says, "There's more than seeds sown in a garden." And for sure, in this situation, there was. We not only have our garden after-school program, but we have benefited by using the garden as an outdoor classroom, which I hope to continue to see, that it goes beyond just being a club, that our teachers see that we can use it as an outdoor classroom space and take our science learning out there, and amongst other things. But I want to mostly thank you, boys and girls, for your unending dedication. They work so hard, and they were the youngest group there, and they were also commended for having one of the best projects that met all the criteria. So, they did have an opportunity to meet some very special people who I hope, um, they have offered to come and visit Mill Pond, and we hope that they come up on that and have more opportunity to work with the state scientists and Rutgers scientists and continue to learn more and more and bring that to our science program. And again, I thank everyone for their unending support, especially Mr. Dougherty, because he really put up with me a lot, and for the parents for making sure that the children were there when they needed to be, and for putting the extra time in that they did. So, thank you all.
So, Dougherty is quite the, um, where, the provider for the school, so I can assist. Okay. All right. Say soil.
Soil.
All right, you can follow Mr. Dougherty on, what is your Twitter?
Uh, I don't remember. At Mill Pond.
At, no. You can find it on our website. So, we're saying a quick goodbye to all of our Mill Ponders, it seems. Listen, you're the best part of this meeting, don't leave now.
It's going to come quick.
So, um, as I continue with my report, I first want to apologize for my voice, a little under the weather, but wouldn't miss a meeting, especially to share the opportunity to celebrate the successes of our students. I want to certainly recognize all of the high school students who you met tonight, and I also want to draw your attention to some of our middle school students who are, are recognized in the superintendent's report. And we have Kelsey, who is described as a student who just walks into the room with a smile, and that's a pretty incredible thing to be able to do. We talk a lot about the research and the smile in the classroom, so I want to recognize Kelsey Keys, a seventh grader at Lacey Middle School. I want to recognize Richard Kavanaugh. Richard is an incredible student, and he is described as being a true pleasure in class. I want to recognize Samantha Swain, an eighth grader, who is involved in ADA, the dance team, band, drama, and is the baseball manager as well. She fits it all in. And then, Cameron Day, again, another student who is described as having a smile on his face always. So, I wanted to recognize tho, those four students, in addition to, um, Kelsey, Richard, Samantha, and Cameron. In the superintendent's report tonight, first, you'll recognize the cover, and we are welcoming our class of two thousand twenty, which is incredible, um, just incredible to say. I also want to share with you that two teachers at Mill Pond, again, have an incredibly active presence on social media, sharing the incredible things that are happening in your classroom. And I want to shout out to Mrs. Hayes and Mrs. Fern, Mrs. Fernicola, because they are actively sharing with us what they're doing in their classroom. And tonight, I'm just so proud to share that they have been counting and are celebrating eighty thousand minutes of reading in their class, and that's, that's pretty awesome. I also want to recognize Mr. Hanchu and Sally DiPaolo. I also want to recognize Mr. Hanchu and Sally DePaula, who is here tonight, and they were invited to present at the New Jersey Tech Expo in front of educators across New Jersey about the program in blended learning, and you can read about that in the superintendent's report this month. And also, they were invited back for round two, because they were incredible. I had an opportunity to be in the audience, and I can tell you that there was a standing ovation for how they shared what's happening in the classrooms at Lacey High School in the blended learning arena. And then finally, I do want to share with you that, as you know, we adopted cover for the superintendent's report and the board report, and tonight, the board report is adorned by students' work, particularly ceramic pieces that were made in Ms. Hoffman's class. And I want to share with you that, and some of you who are educators know about Bloom's taxonomy and the higher-order thinking skills, well, what we do know is the highest order is creativity, and it is not easy to teach, and it is certainly not easy to develop in students, but I hope that you will celebrate with us the creativity that's happening in our classrooms, and certainly is evidenced on the cover tonight. I want to ask if there is anyone here tonight who is being recognized as a donor. The board will take a motion tonight to adopt the donation, so I want to thank you in advance. I also am going to ask Dr. Clark to help me tonight in the reading of the names. Tonight, we're going to recognize all of our parents, our community members, our businesses who are supporting Project Graduation 2016. And so this is the first time that we're doing this, where we are publicly recognizing all of the people whose incredible donations and support make a night like that possible. So, Dr. Clark is going to read those donations. We've sent a letter to all of our donors on behalf of the board thanking them, and then she will segue right into the report that we are mandated by law to do for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So, at this point, Dr. Clark, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Anthony. It's an impressively long donation list, so just bear with me as I read these generous donations for Project Graduation. The first donation were two all-day passes to Casino Pier made by Carol Durkin, a $100 check by the Cedar Creek PTA, a $50 check from CHEG, a $36 check from Dr. Kessler, orthodontist, a $1,000 check from the Elks BPOE 2518, a $100 check from Farmers Insurance and Donna Volz, five $10 gift certificates from the Forked River Butcher in the amount of $50, two one-month free passes to Gladiator Gym, from Gladiator Gym, so passes to and from, a $100 check from Hember and Stork, a check for $62.50 from Hudson City Savings Bank, a $100 check from John Lorton, J. Lorton &amp; Company, a $100 check from the Knights of Columbus, a $100 check from Lacey Girls Softball, a $100 check from Lacey Soccer Club, a $500 check from Medicine2Go, four tickets valuing $80 from New Egypt Speedway, a $50 check from the Riggs Funeral Home, two tickets valued at $38.40 to Ripley's Believe It or Not, a $25 gift certificate from the River Lady, to the River Lady, a $250 check from the Rotary, a $100 gift certificate for MTE accessories from the Sansivir family, Lisa Sansivir and Peter Sansivir, a $100 check from Silver Cloud Marina, four tickets valuing $56 to the Sky Zone, donated by the Sky Zone, a $100 check from Stein &amp; Subsy, two $25 gift cards from Courtney Peters on behalf of TD Bank, a $25 gift card to Taco Bell from Taco Bell, a $100 check from Urgent Care Now, four tickets donated from the Winding River Ice Skating Rink, a $25 check from Steven, Dr. Stephen C. Beach, and a $100 check from George Broome, representing Remax at Barnegat Bay. So, very, very generous donations, and we thank each and every one of you. As Dr. Anthony mentioned, I'm going to segue into a report that school districts are required to report on semi-annually. So, this report is the Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Data Report, and as I mentioned, we're required to report on it twice a year, so the data that I'm sharing this evening is for the period from July 1st to December 31st, 2015. And then at the end of the school year, we'll do the second half of the school year. So, what I'm going to be reporting on are the number of investigations of HIB, harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases, and then whether or not those investigations were confirmed, and I'm going to compare it to last year. So what I can tell you is that Cedar Creek, Forked River, and Lenoka Harbor schools' number of investigations were zero, so obviously, the confirmed cases were zero, and that is the exact same data as last year. For the Mill Pond School, during this time last year, the number of investigations was five, and all five of those were confirmed. This reporting period, the number of investigations was one, and that case was confirmed. For the middle school, this time last year, two investigations, one of those was confirmed. However, this year, the number is zero, so that's good news. And then finally, for the high school, this time last year, the number of investigations was seventeen, eight of those were confirmed. This time, this year, I'm sorry, for this time period, the number of investigations was three, and of those three, zero were confirmed. So, I don't know if you recall, but during last month's board meeting, I reported on our HIB grades, and I reported that we're seeing some significant improvements, and so what that tells us is that the investigations, how we're doing the investigations, the programs that we're implementing, not only with our staff members, but more probably with our students, tells us that we are now seeing the fruits of our, of our hard work when it comes to HIB investigations, and so I'm very excited to share that. So, I'll be reporting the similar results, I'm sorry, the similar data at the end of the school year, and we'll compare it to this time period. And that's all I have, Dr. Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a good time to recognize the work of the harassment, intimidation, bullying coordinators in each of our schools. Our school principals take these matters very seriously, and Dr. Clark serves as the district HIB coordinator, and she does an outstanding job. So I want to commend the staff and our students for continuing to make sure that our schools are safe and that all of our reporting protocols are in place. And that concludes the superintendent's report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we open up the public comments, I have two letters that I'd like to read. This one is, "Dear Sandra Anthony and staff, I would like to express my sincere appreciation for recognizing me as December's High School Student of the Month. I am truly humbled and honored to receive this amazing award. Thank you again for a wonderful presentation at last month's Board of Education meeting. Sincerely, Nevada Nicoletti." And also to show, this is a very nice letter from the township, actually from Casey Parker from the township of Lacey. "Dear Dr. Anthony, on behalf of the township, I would like to personally thank the school mechanics Kenny Costello and Keith Marion for their assistance during Winter Storm Jonas. They both performed their duties with proficiency and really provided much-needed assistance to this department. We realize how important it is to recognize the outstanding abilities of employees, and we want to let you know how fortunate you are to have such conscientious individuals in your employ. Again, we thank them for their assistance and thank you for allowing them to assist." Casey Parker, Director of Public Works. And it just goes to show the partnership that the school board and the town have in crises like this and in general, just all throughout the year. So, thank you, Mr. Parker, for sharing that with us. We appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. If you have a comment, please raise your hand, state your name and address for the records. Is there anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on to board comments. Let's start. Mrs. DeSenza, could you start down there for me?
Sure. Welcome to Mr. DeGeorge. I hope that you are now acclimated to your new office, and congratulations to the Students of the Month, Haley, Ryan, Juan, and unsum hero, William Rapsis. And for the public's knowledge, the cost of benefits this past month was $1,119,821.50, and the payroll for this past month was $4,081,750.70. And as many people may know, these are the largest expenses in our current $75.4 million budget, aside from about $35 million in debt. See page 29 of the agenda or page 14 of the Bills and Claims Report. And currently, our student enrollment is showing on the superintendent's report as Last month and this month, I've noticed that attendance in the high school is at only 90%. It's on the superintendent's report also on page one. This number could be and should be higher. Kids can't learn unless they get to school. Parents, please make certain your students are only staying home, it's contagious, and I think we should all try and work together to get these attendance rates up somehow, because this is significant data that the State Department of Education reviews annually for our district. It's been very busy since our last meeting. The middle school winter band concert at the high school was January 20th, then the Lenoka winter band concert, and then next I visited chess night at the Forked River School, Mill Pond Book Fair, and winter band concert at Cedar Creek. Friday, January 29th, I attended the 3D demonstration at the Ocean County Mall sponsored by Ocean County Health Department. Drugs, drinking, and driving are a bad choice, not an accident. Make smart choices always. The freshman orientation at the high school was very well-attended. Good luck to the class of 2020 as they make plans and choose their classes for freshman year at Lacey Township High School. Last Thursday, Mrs. McAvoy and I attended the Ocean County School Board meeting. Understanding the audit was one of the sessions, and it was very informative. This past Friday, I stopped at the middle school dance party. After a few postponements, the students were finally able to have their party. Thank you to all the staff and parents that helped make this night possible. And if I've missed an event or two, my apologies, but I do try to get to as many school events as I can. My thanks go out today to Mr. Hanchu for a tour of the 21st Century Classroom this morning. I was able to see the students and teachers using their Chromebooks. The students seem very well-adapted to technology. Courtesy can be contagious, and I see it in the morning when I drive my son to the high school once in a while. People are stopping briefly to allow cars and buses to get into the high school driveway, and this really helps move the traffic along in the morning, and it helps everyone get to class on time. Thank you very much to all the courteous drivers who are helping to facilitate the flow of traffic at the high school in the morning. And I hope that the community is aware that the strategic planning teams are being formed. Thank you to everyone that signed up. The first meeting is February 23rd, next Tuesday, in the High School Media Center. We'll see you there. And I'd like to extend our thanks to the green teams. It's been a great job that they've all put in so much effort. I finally figured out how to view all the action plans for Lacey's six schools on the Sustainable Jersey for Schools website, and we look forward to the certification of all six schools. The benchmarking process with the gas and electric bills is also underway, and the Sustainability Committee extends our thanks to Mr. Zalinski for making that possible. He filled out all the forms and provided all the necessary data to TRC Solutions. At any time, the public and our students may view the district's solar production graphs. In each school, there is a kiosk that shows production, and on the website, under Departments and Programs, select Business Office, and on the right-hand side of the page, there are six links that show the live solar production statistics on each school. It's interesting to compare the usage and production when schools are open or closed. For example, over the weekend, three schools were fully solar during the day of course. The Forked River School will be hosting their annual literacy fair on Thursday, February 18th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The students have paragraphs and essays posted on the walls in the school, and parents come in to read the children's work, as well as enjoy other literacy activities. And after the literacy fair, I will be going over to the high school for the science fair display in the media center. Tomorrow night was supposed to be red night out, but it was canceled, and I was very disappointed, because raising awareness against drug abuse is very important. This coming March 2nd, there will be a parent forum, March 3rd, about random student drug testing in the middle school at 7:00 p.m. And thank you to all those in attendance here tonight. Your presence is very much appreciated. I'm done, Mrs. Downing.
Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy?
Good evening. To keep up with the spotlight on seniors, tonight, we have two students. Jackie Crankshaw graduated in 2009. She got a full scholarship to Caldwell to play soccer, and she started on the soccer team at Caldwell for four years. She graduated from there in 2013 with a degree in business management. She's now working at Lifeboat Distribution as a product marketing manager. Nick Giuliano graduated in 2012 from the high school. He went on to Ocean County Vocational School, and he completed their program in law enforcement. From there, he went on to, back to Ocean County College, and he got his associate's degree in science. Presently, he's working as a security officer at Community Medical Center. He is also an aspiring hip-hop artist. He was the opening act at the Stone Pony for over a year, and his music is on iTunes and YouTube. He just released a song called "Let It Go," and if you'd like to listen to it, you could check out iTunes or YouTube. This, as you know, is an important and busy time for the board. We're in the process of hiring a new superintendent, preparing a budget, looking at technology, especially one-on-one, and we're looking into professional development for the teachers, reviewing policies and curriculum. Even though we're not reading our curriculum minutes, in January, we had important topics such as random drug testing results, ReadyGen and Envision 2.0, Fast Forward, a Park Family Night that's in the planning, we talked about delin enrollment and T1, out-of-state travel and the after-school fitness club. If you want more information on everything that was discussed, it's all on the website, all the curriculum minutes, policy, and finance minutes. I encourage everyone in the public, teachers, staff members, to reach out to the Board of Ed. We're, we see you in Walmart, ShopRite, anywhere, and we're all good listeners. So if you are an expert on curriculum, if you know policy, finance, please reach out to us. We're all good listeners, and we're here to serve the public, so please don't hesitate to reach out to any of us at any time. And as I said, the last three months, I see the LTEA here, and we appreciate you coming. We hope that this contract gets settled soon, hopefully in March, it's all done. Thank you for all coming, and I know how it feels to work without a contract. That's it, President Downing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claus. How do you do? You're good, huh?
You did well.
All right. I practiced.
I've got nothing to follow up with. No comments.
No comments, seriously? Okay. Mr. Sled?
Well, thank you, President Downing. I'd like to welcome Mr. George here, our new BA. I'd also like to congratulate our honored students, Haley May, Ryan Newman, Juan Osorno, and William Rapsis, and our seventh and eighth grade students that were honored as well. Congratulations to the 4H Club students. It's very impressive. Our Project Graduation donors, I want to thank them too for being so generous. And last but not least, following, Mrs. McAvoy, I'd like to thank the teachers for their patience in regards to their contract, and I'm very optimistic that they will be rewarded soon with the new contract. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bidwell?
Thank you, President Downing. I only have really a couple of comments. I just want to bring your attention to a couple of things that we're going to be voting on tonight that I think deserve your attention. The first is, you'll notice in item C, where... The first is, you'll notice in item C, we're about to sell 1,000 solar energy credits, generating roughly $300,000. Is that correct, Mr. George?
300 each, yes.
Roughly $300,000 total, right? Yep. So, again, you know, just showing you the value of the solar energy, solar panels that we have, $300,000 is quite a feat, and I'm very proud of the fact that we're able to make that happen. The other item I want to bring your attention to is item 6A, and it's certainly early to recognize him, but just want you to know that Mr. Hanchu is putting in for retirement. He's served our community for many, many years. I don't know the total number of years, but I can tell you that he's been at the high school for at least four years, and prior to that, at the middle school. He's somebody that has really taken care of our children and our community for a long period of time. We'll have a few more months to honor him as he gets ready to leave, but I wanted to bring your attention to that item in the agenda as well. Thank you for your service, and good luck for you, with, good luck to you in the future. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, and thanks for recognizing Mr. Hanchu. Cross that one off my list. In fact, my list, everyone has said something except for one item. So, I do want to congratulate our Students of the Month, Haley, Ryan, and Juan, our vocational student, and William, our unsung hero, for their accomplishments. And just looking at those students and listening to them and their manners and just their presentation is just a small portion of what we have here at the high school, and I want to congratulate them. I also like to congratulate five Special Olympians. They participated in the Ocean County Bowling Special Olympics. They won five medals, two gold, one silver, and one bronze. And they're going to compete on February 27th in the state game, so I want to wish them a lot of luck in their bowling. And I'm sure they have a better average than I do. So, moving on to new business. Mr. George, you have anything? Okay, so, new business, items A through G. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Mrs. McAvoy, Mr. Bidwell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sledi, yes. Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Item two, donations. Please be patient, I want to read all the donations to recognize the generosity this town presents to us. At Cedar Creek, we have the Learning Disabilities Organization presented $5,000 for the Cubby Fit Walking Trail. Wells Fargo Bank, a community support campaign, $350. Ms. Jody Drake, Director of Wyndham Skyland Towers, donated $200 towards the Cubby Fit Walking Trail. At Forka River School, we have Scholarship America donated a target grant of $700. The Patterson Family Foundation, for the Patterson Grant, $3,000. Mrs. Melissa Foglia, children's books totaling $50. At Lenoka Harbor, Ms. Susan Feldman donated 33 boxes of 9x12 white envelopes for a cost of $200. At the high school, we have Mr. Bill Merman donated fishing poles and gear for $300. Seeto, oh, I know Seeto well, when I used to have a boat. Seeto gift basket, a one-year membership, $235. Dennis Riley, fishing rigs, $300. Lacy Marine, they donated a rod and reel combo for $350. And Mr. Thomas Paulowski, custom fishing rods for $300. On behalf of the entire board, we would like to thank you for your generous donations. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Mr. Sledi and Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mr. Sledi, yes. Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes, and thank you very much.
Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Item three, programs and curriculum. Could I have a motion, please, for A?
Move it.
Mr. Bidwell?
Second.
Mr. Sledi? Roll call?
Mrs. Sledi, yes. Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Item four, professional days, item A. Could I have a motion?
I have a correction. My workshop was canceled. Can we strike that?
The bottom?
New Jersey School Board's canceled it.
The boot camp?
Yes.
Could I have a motion as amended?
Move.
Second.
Mrs. McAvoy, Mr. Bidwell? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Are you voting on it?
Yes.
Item five, student matter. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Mr. Sledi? Is there a second?
I'm second.
Mr. Claus? Roll call?
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Item six, certificated personnel, items A through I. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Second.
Mr. Claus? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
You sure, Jim, before I vote?
Yes. Ms. Downing?
Yes. Item seven, support non-certificated staff personnel. Want, please note, item D, we have Tara Dodaro, who is getting her associate's degree. And I forgot to say, on item six, we have teachers, item E, who advanced from bachelor's to bachelor's plus 20, and masters to masters plus 15, Joseph Rossum and Rebecca Felding. Could I have a motion, please, for item seven?
Move.
A through H. Mr. Sledi? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Claus? Claus? Mr. Claus? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes. Mr. Stein, you have anything?
Yes.
Oh, we have the answers.
Three in on motions. Request the board adopt a motion, move to ratify the return to duty of employee A, teacher, Mill Pond Elementary School, effective as of February 16, 2016, without restriction.
Move.
Second.
Mrs. McAvoy, Mr. Sledi? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Request the board adopt a motion, move on a non-precedent-setting basis to grant Marine to Annette, teacher, Mill Pond Elementary School, a leave of absence for good cause for the four days recorded in November 2015 as sick days.
Move.
Second.
That's, that's good. Not as sick days, right? That we're going to?
They were recorded as sick days, and replacing them as, as good cause.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Request the board adopt a motion, move to terminate the employment of part-time employee B, cafeteria worker, Lacy Township Middle School, effective immediately.
Roll call? I mean, motion, please?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bidwell, second. Roll call?
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Senza?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?